Ladies and gentlemen, I want to something came up from the mayor's not hearing, so everybody is good to go. Followed by pleasure to leave our wonderful boy scouts at eight thirty-three and our conference site. Happening this to the group. Don't they look happy? They were here. Thanks to the parents for letting them come.
Thank you, ma'am. Please, by his. Dear God, thank you for the blessing of this day and the blessing of us being able to come together as we go about doing the city's business and give us the ability and the power to approach with energy and zeal and joy and passion and grace. Give us the wisdom to know what is right and the strength of character to actually do that and make sure that it happens. This we ask in your name. Amen. To the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before they leave, you gotta take picture around Sweden. They gotta take.
Do you want us to all?
He wants us to be in.
Uh, yeah.
Why don't we get on there? Come on, baby.
They're coming down.
There she is. That's the best in the church. Thanks to the church, we'll let them go.
Councilmember John DeWorke.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming. Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brasington. Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White. Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Yes, Secretary.
I promise that this will be very quick. Thank you. Thank you for letting me be here today. The reason for my being here is to share our two thousand twenty-one annual report and to give you a brief update on the great things going on at the Metropolitan Arts Council. Two thousand twenty-one was our best year ever. We raised two point two, over two point two-six million dollars. Our endowment crossed the two million dollar mark. Total assets topped out at a little over three point four million. Greenville Open Studios had record high sales of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is truly a record high and shows you that coming out of the pandemic, how necessary the arts are. I want to thank you all for your support of the arts through a city accommodations tax, especially during the pandemic. You all were very, very generous, and I really appreciate your standing behind us. Our A tax, MAC has grown with the funding that the A tax has given us, and we really do appreciate that and look forward to making our presentation for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three on April twelfth. Again, one other final thing. TD Bank just renewed its five-year commitment to our arts education programs in collaboration with the Greenville County Schools for two hundred thousand dollars. So we're very thrilled about that. And does anyone have any questions or comments?
Thanks for all you.
Thank you.
And if any of you would like, we do have some of these that are available.
Everyone should have one.
Yeah, we have one for ourselves, but I'm saying there are some available somewhere.
Oh, absolutely. Come to our office, we have a ton of them.
Okay. These are wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you, Alan. We appreciate that. All right, and we have. Anyone wishing to speak to council?
Presentation next. We don't have anyone to see.
Hey, nobody, oh, this is different. No wonder Knox left. Okay. He heard y'all, nobody was coming. Okay, now we have a presentation from Conestee Nature Preserve. Mr. Michael Corley.
Good afternoon. Great to see everybody. I'm very excited to be here. My name is Michael Corley. I'm the Executive Director of Conestee Nature Preserve. Two thousand twenty-one was my first year in that role, so I'm about fifteen months in right now. And one of the really striking things for me in my first year was just how fortunate we are to have such a productive relationship with the city in a number of ways. We have a city designee on our board, Megan Young, who's calling out there in the audience. We share property management with the city in relation to the old landfill. And most importantly, for our continued existence, we receive financial support from the city. So I'm here first and foremost to say thank you, to show you where your money is going, and to, I know we're well into two thousand twenty-two now, but this is my, a little bit of my brief year-end review for the preserve. So what the city, what the residents of the city get for our partnership is an incredible six hundred and forty-acre resource that is in the city limits, right? That's the really incredible thing to me and the real striking thing for me since joining this organization is the proximity. And because of that proximity, because of our giant park, parking lot, because of our fee-free status, we get a true cross-section of the city of Greenville, which is really the incredible thing about the place. You come out on an average Saturday, you don't see the homogenous crowd that you might see at a far-flung state park. We get a great cross-section of folks from the city of Greenville. And while we're there, while they're there, we try to show them a little taste of the natural world. And the natural world that we have is remarkable. If someone had asked me, are there river otters in the city limits of Greenville, I certainly would have said no to that. But there's quite a healthy population of river otters at Conestee. We have an incredible array of wildlife. We are a, an oasis of nature in the middle of developed Greenville and Greenville County. And because of that, we get this amazing collection of wildlife, including right now our great blue heron rookery. If you haven't been out to the preserve lately, you should come out and see our great blue herons. They're on the nest right now. We have seven or eight of those gullwing right now with their, their eggs, and they'll soon have little fluffy baby dinosaur-looking herons that'll grow into giant four-foot herons. So it's really an incredible thing to watch and to observe the changing seasons. But of course, the point of all that is to get the residents of Greenville out, to provide them with education enrichment, to shift their perspective, to inform them of things they didn't know before, and to send them back into our community. And the way that we do that is through our trail system. We have six hundred and forty acres, which we cover through more than thirteen miles of trails. It is very boardwalk-heavy, which is my favorite thing and also the bane of my existence. Every time we get a giant flood through downtown Greenville, we get that giant flood down at Conestee. And we had two very major boardwalk replacements this year to replace infrastructure that had washed out during previous floods. During two thousand twenty-two, we're going to be taking on complete replacement of the Swamp Rabbit Trail boardwalks within the preserve, our biggest boardwalk infrastructure, infrastructure project to date. And we do all that so that we can provide opportunities for learning, enrichment, engagement. Those trails are out there. We are open every day from dawn till dusk. Those opportunities to explore are out there at any given time. We also try to situate those through our field trips. And thank goodness, in-person field trips are back. During COVID last year, we developed virtual field trips. We were in the classroom, even when we were not allowed to be in the classroom. In a, in a normal year, we serve around five thousand students. We are very happy to hope and expect that next school year, we'll be back to that number. We are already very busy since the announcement of field trips returning. We were able to.
Michael, what are they looking at?
He's so low.
Something very interesting.
Thank you.
So during two thousand twenty-one, we were able to have our summer camp, which is offered to middle school students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds that have an aptitude for science and the outdoors. It's populated through a nomination process. I'm really frankly pretty jealous of what these students get to do. They take water samples from the entire Reddy watershed, they test them in ReWaz's lab, they lecture shock for fish, they, we even let them do, you know, stuff that's not learning, like jumping off of rocks at Lake Jocasi and all sorts of fun stuff. And it's not just for the children. I would hope that anybody in the room would come check out our Saturday courses, which run the gamut from learning how to bird to yoga to painting and building rain barrels and everything in between. So in my first year in two thousand twenty-one, I really wanted to bring a focus to increased community collaboration. I've spent my career in the nonprofit realm, so to speak, and I observed that very often we exist in silos, right? It's none of our faults, it's just the way that it happens to be. But we have this incredible resource that is Conestee Nature Preserve, and my goal is to open that resource up to groups in, within the city, within our community, to accentuate the mission of those organizations. And we've had some really great success with that so far. During two thousand twenty-one, Momentum Bike Club took the first ever, I usually qualify this and say the first ever legal camping trip at Conestee. The first ever overnight camping trip at Conestee, which is a, they biked from, from downtown Greenville, came out, spent the night in the preserve and biked back. But our focus is on expanding our reach beyond the boundary. Our, our goal is to make a difference beyond the boundaries of the preserve, and we hope that through, through increased collaboration, we can do that. You know, you maybe have heard the expression that all who wander are not lost, but I think maybe there were times at Conestee that all who wandered were lost. And we've tried, one of our focuses has been, been on usability, improving usability, accessibility of new signs, new maps, new color scheme. And the purpose of all that is to make Conestee usable and accessible for non-traditional outdoor user groups. We don't just want people like me who, you know, spend a fair numbers of their weekends hiking. We want Conestee to be a place where anybody without any experience can come out, can be comfortable, and can find their way around. So that is two thousand twenty-one in a nutshell. But two thousand twenty-two is going to be an incredibly exciting year at the preserve. I know many of us had the experience growing up, I know I did, of playing in the woods, right? No parents watching you, playing in the woods, doing what you'd want, building a fort, turning over logs. We, we see that very few kids get that, not as many kids get that experience as used to. We have kids that arrive at the preserve for field trips that are scared of walking in the woods. And our desire is to counteract that nature deficit through the construction of a nature playscape. It's a playground without playground equipment, where there's these intentionally designed elements, logs, mud, rivers, rocks, where children have that experience of feeling as though they are exploring the natural world, learning, getting that sense of wonder while doing so in a controlled and designed environment. So this is our big initiative for two thousand twenty-two. Some examples, this is a, an amenity that is present in many cities of Greenville size already, like Cincinnati and St. Louis and, and similar sized places. Some examples of the elements that will, similar to what will be included in our playscape. And then finally, because we want Conestee to be a place for everybody, before I started at the preserve, mountain bikers were prohibited because of conflicts on the trail. We're going to bring mountain bikers back to the preserve during two thousand twenty-two by building mountain bike-only trails, connecting those trails to the greater swamp rabbit system and hopefully adding a really nice piece to Greenville's incredible existing set of green infrastructure. The only other thing I'll say is I have this mysterious box here. It doesn't have live squirrels or anything in it. It has some really sleek newly-designed Conestee merchandise that I would love for y'all to pick through when the, the meeting is over. And I would have set this right again. Free to help yourself when you have a chance to get away from your desk.
Thank you so much, Mike. Anybody have any questions, et cetera?
I do have a quick question. First of all, if, if that box has a snazzy hat like the one you're wearing, I call dibs on that. How many, how many miles of trails exist in the, in the preserve right now?
Over thirteen miles of trails.
And so when you add the mountain bike specific trails, will that?
We will be up over, we'll add, we'll be up over fifteen with, with the addition of those trails.
That's great. Yeah, nice presentation. Thanks.
Yeah.
Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful.
Thank you.
Some good information for the audience as well. Great place to go other than in the community. Thank you so much. All right, we going next to our public hearing, and we have a public hearing for a proposed abandonment of Daughthett Circle, item A B dash two thousand twenty-two. Paul?
Hello there, Paul Dow. This is a public hearing portion for an abandonment of Daughthett Circle. The abandonment portion is owned on both sides by the same owner. This is to ultimately serve for a proposed development. We, as required, mailed out notices of today's public hearing to residents within five hundred feet. We also advertised in the Greenville News. We also have an extensive list of utilities that we reach out for, for comment. No objections from any utility regarding this abandonment. We did get one inquiry about increased traffic due to that proposed development from one of the residences that got the notice. We had another, just inquiry about it from a DOT employee that also got the notice, but no real concerns there.
Anyone have any questions? Is there a motion?
Oh, no.
Ma'am, what we need to do is ask.
Speak for or against this item? Let's see. Just to be sure. Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, question.
Do we know what the owner is planning?
Yes, so forty units.
Okay.
Yeah, and they have been in, in discussion with Israel Metropolitan Church because their land is adjacent to that particular area.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Paul. We appreciate that, et cetera. And we, next item, we go to our consent agenda.
Oh, your person?
Second.
Okay, the clerk will call the road.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye, and I would like to say that the community, the Sterling community actually sent a letter of support for this particular habitat and humanity process. Wanted to be sure before we get started. Thank you so much. We go to our regular agenda.
Fifteen A, an ordinance to abandon Daughthett Circle.
So moved.
Second.
So call the road.
Councilmember DeWorke. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. Item passes. Item sixteen A.
A resolution to request the removal of an approximately zero point two-five mile section of Haney Street from the state highway system.
Okay, wait just a second. We got Clinton is here to give information, and I know y'all excited.
I'm, I'm sorry, I received the motion the second, please.
Second.
Okay, motions, okay, go ahead, Clint.
Mayor Pro Tim and council, I'm really here to answer any questions you may have. This was a, kind of an anticipated request to DOT. We've spent the last few months, as you know, going through our South Downtown traffic assessment and infrastructure assessment, and this was, Haney Street's kind of integral to all the road improvements we're trying to do in South Downtown. It's, it's a, it's a currently a major connector, east-west connector, and a little bit of a concern for the, for the residents. And we do have some kind of the long-term plans kind of figured out now for South Downtown Road and, and traffic. So as we work through that process with DOT, they were, you know, now that we have a plan that we could show them and a schedule for doing so, they were comfortable moving forward with this petition to release the road to us.
And I want to personally thank you, Clint, because your staff has done a wonderful job, and, and people are in that area, as Ken can attest, they are quite happy with what we work with them on.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
I have a question, Clinton. This was a big win for the neighborhood. And forgive me if I'm getting this road mixed up with another road we talk about, but we had slowed the, the speed on this one.
Yes.
And we had an issue with maybe not having the sign posted at the new speed. What's the speed now?
Twenty-five miles.
Okay, and have we gotten those signs posted?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
That was actually one of the last things we got SEDOT to do.
Right, right. Before we took it back. Good job.
DOT gets the credit for doing the signs.
Well, they think we really had that on. Et cetera. All right, we've had a motion, it's approved, it's a resolution, so all those in favor of removing this section of Haney from the state highway system, please say aye.
Aye.
On the post. They're not present, okay, so it's passed. Now, staff reports, we have two staff reports, Augusta Street Road Diet, you're already standing up there, Clint, go with it.
All right, well, thank you. So you're really just wanted to give everybody an update on the Augusta Street Road Diet. As you know, we implemented the Road Diet about a week ago. The implementation from the contractor went much faster than we anticipated. He got it all done in one night with the restriping, so basically a one-mile section of the road. But he did a fabulous job on, on the traffic control and just his, his work progress and everything. So he just went really smooth, had a good night, was able to get it all done on that Sunday night. And last week, as you know, was, was of course spring break for Greenville County Schools. So it was, it was great to kind of slowly transition our residents into the new traffic pattern because it's a pretty significant change for Augusta Street, as you can imagine. And so I think last week, we, we saw the, the Road Diet, how it's performing and how traffic, overall traffic operations were functioning. And, you know, all in all, I think the operations are, are going very well. You know, I think the motors have, have adjusted to it. That, that will still occur over these next few weeks as people just get used to the, to new lane configurations, but really, really weren't seeing any major traffic issues last week. We, we did have to make a few tweaks to, to our plan. We adjusted some of the pavement markings on the, the northern end of the project, and we added a few more signs, and, and we're currently studying the, the traffic, the signal timing right now. So that was last week. So today was the first day of kind of what I call normal school traffic, kind of what we're seeing. And much, much different experience today. It's, it's amazing, the, the extra traffic that just from kind of being back at normal operations and the school adds. Saw, saw, you know, more congestion this morning on the road. There was probably a thirty-five minute window there between seven forty-five and eight twenty, when, when we're really kind of seeing a lot of congestion, longer backups, longer queues. But for the most part, and again, this is day one, so we still got some adjusting to do. People, people will get familiarized themselves with the, the new traffic pattern, and, and we'll adjust to it. But, you know, traffic was moving. It, it was moving slowly at times, but never was, we didn't, we didn't ever see just a total gridlock or standstill. It, it did continue to move. As Chief Thompson pointed out, we definitely wasn't seeing any speeding this morning. So, but all in all, I think, you know, as this week goes on, we're going to, we're going to continue to monitor just very closely out there. We have our consultant, Stand Tech, coming up Wednesday to kind of do the final field assessment for the re-timing of the signals. They'll, they'll be adjusting the, the signal timings based on, you know, real-time, real, out there in the field monitoring the, the traffic and adjusting the timings that way. So feel really good that the signal timing adjustments is gonna, is gonna help get that traffic moving smoothly like we want it. You know, I've driven the road multiple times, both during the peak hours and the off-peak hours. You can, you can sense this traffic calming effect that, that the Road Diet has had. It definitely feels more comfortable to drive the road and feels safer to drive the road. And, you know, all in all, we're, we haven't seen the level of service, you know, come to a gridlock. So pretty pleased with it. We're going to keep watching it very closely throughout this week and of course studying it over the next few months.
Okay. Are we still undecided on the issue of the no ride on red from Byrd onto Augusta and whether or not to pull back?
I looked at that this morning, and it's definitely improved the site distance. I do think there's some landscaping that, that can be kind of maintained a little bit better to open up the site, sight line a little bit. I want to look at that with our traffic engineer, and I'm going to be riding the project with SEDOT later this week and specifically want to talk about that.
Okay, great.
Thank you. And that, that remains, from an unscientific standpoint, the number one most frequently voiced concern.
Yeah.
And Clint, how much of, of the congestion this morning do you think is attributable to people getting on Chris, getting at Crystal and all of a sudden saying, oh, it's changed? I mean, is, is that an issue, you think?
I don't think so. You know, last week and Greenville PD has been very helpful to us. They brought out variable, variable message boards, so we had.
Yep.
A lot of notifications with, with the arrows and the flashing lights to identify, hey, a lane change is coming up, prepare. So that's, that's done a really good job at just bringing the people's awareness to the, to the lanes ending and merging together. I think it's just a, a function of kind of getting that, mixing in that school traffic this morning with the regular commuter traffic.
Well, and I live at Riverside and Blythe Drive, so every, just about every person who calls me, it's a positive. I feel so much safer. I don't worry about the telephone poles anymore. It's, it's, it just feels good to drive down that stretch of Augusta Street.
I've received several comments like that, too.
Any, any feedback on the bus route, James? Need sharing or everything pretty smooth on it? All good? Two thumbs up? Fair.
James has got a comment.
I was told to come forward to the microphone. I listen to Camilla. We don't know yet. Last week, spring break, no idea today.
We don't have anything.
We need months of data to get an answer. Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to be sure to publicly, you know, for the record in this setting, commend the collective effort, because it's like everything else, right? So many things, and not everything we do is a city, a team effort. But I think each of us is aware how many departments of the city, third parties, you mentioned, one of our consulting firms, Stand Tech, right? Even the SEDOT leading up this, how many people have collaborated to get this diet to a point where it could get off to a successful start by most all measures? And I know that there's a lot of personnel on the roadways pre-eight AM and through the ATM hour, just to make sure that they're monitoring, observing, and prepared to make whatever calibrations are there. So Clint and Howie and your respective teams, city manager, others I'm accidentally overlooking, let me express gratitude. I love what Russell said. That's the way I felt about it. I mean, as, as somebody that travels that roadway, it, it assuredly feels different from a exhale some relief, you got some elbow room, it doesn't feel as tight and constricted. And then we laughed earlier, you know, somebody said, yeah, but, but traffic's moving slower. We said, well, that was one of the, that was one of the objectives of the Road Diet. But the fact that we're trying to make sure that there's no other hiccups or unintended consequences is recognized with appreciation.
Well, I also, you know, I think. Well, I also, you know, I think it's worth recognizing what brought us here to this point. So the Monday that this opened, to commend the leadership team as well, I had one complaint from a constituent and the chief of police, the city manager, and the director of public works was there within one hour, along with Stand Tech, watching it. But we got to this point because of a tragedy that happened to a pedestrian on Augusta Street. And we can't, we can't do anything to undo that, but we have done this to make it safer for pedestrians. And I ran that road that day, Monday, for the first time since her death. And from the standpoint of being a pedestrian on those sidewalks, it felt markedly more safe. So thank you for that. Thank you for that.
I'm just, I am, I'm glad you brought that up, that it's, has it been a year?
Almost.
Wow, been a year. You know, reminds me of a story, and I'll try to be brief.
Yes, you will. Trust me, you will be brief.
Clint, you remember why those metal barriers went up on I-26? Do you remember? About 15 years ago, maybe even 20 years ago, legislature and citizens kept saying, we need to get metal barrier, we need to get those fences up in the median, someone's going to get killed, there's going to be a tragedy. It's going to cost $25 million to put those barriers up. What happened? Family of seven, was it seven? In a minivan, truck, truck crossed over.
Yep.
Right? What happened? Months, just a couple of months later, what happened? Those steel barriers went up in the medians, right? And we had a tragedy. So tragedy took that, I remember that, almost 20 years ago. Tragedy took this. I don't mean to tamper the, I don't want to tamper the, the excitement of, of getting this done, but I will just, once again, thank you, but also say how much urgency we, we have to address Stone Avenue because I do not want there to be a tragedy for us to get that done. And I know you're working hard and so this is not a criticism at all. This is my shameless plug every time, every time we talk about roads.
That's a heck of a segue. 17B. Yeah, well done.
17B.
17B, that's right.
Bring it, Clint.
Thank you.
All right, and real quick to Will's point, I can't thank all the, the help that I've had on this. First of all, y'all's leadership in, in supporting this project, city manager and Shannon, all the, the support I've received from the city manager's office. But Will, you're right, I mean, all the collective participation we had from our planning department to public works, engineering, PD, fire, Green Link's been involved, so SE DOT, Bike Walker Greenville, we've had a lot of collaboration and true partnership there, and that's what it takes to get these kind of projects done. So appreciate that. But great segue to our pedestrian safety study and comments duly noted on Stone Avenue. Certainly appreciate those.
Thanks for always listening.
Yes, sir, anytime. But yep, please give a quick update on pedestrian safety study as well. We are about three weeks into the study. We had a kickoff meeting, Stand Tech was the, is the consultant working on this project force, and they've got a really strong team. They've got Urban Design Associates on the team to lead the public involvement, engagement component of the project. They have Tool Design, is a very strong pedestrian and kind of bike engineering firm. So they're, they're going to bring some really great national experience to the team as well. But excited to have, have us working on this and underway. We had our kickoff meeting on March 4th and really just moving forward. Right now, we're in the data collection and analysis phase and we'll be in that phase for the next couple of months. We got a, Urban Design Associates has prepared and presented the public engagement plan for us, which will, is a very, very good detailed plan. We've got, got four series of workshops planned. They will begin in, in the, kind of the end of May is when we're looking for that first one to begin. Really want to have our data collection complete so that we can present data and, and then, you know, kind of inquire with the stakeholder groups in the community, kind of what the, what they see are the issues and concerns. But four workshop, series of workshops, each of those will involve two days of work sessions with the stakeholder group, and then each, each of those will also conclude with a public meeting. So we're looking at four public meetings throughout the course of this project. We are on a nine-month schedule to complete this study. Study involves 64 roads. These are our higher volume roads in the city. In the, in the RFP, we actually had 36 roads identified. Stand Tech recommended, and their proposal recommended that 10 more be considered based on their knowledge of the area and some of the research they had done. And then as we got into the final scoping of the, the contract, there was 18 roads in, in our school zones that we, we felt that were very important, that we studied those. We added those into the contract as well. So very pleased with our, our kind of final road list, that that's going to be studied. And Stand Tech, they presented a, a, probably a little more aggressive schedule initially to get this done in about six months, but we knew the public engagement was going to be important and we need to spend a little more time with that. So we added a few more months to the contract to get through that, but.
Clint, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
I do hope that if there's 18 roads within the, the school zone, I hope that the PTAs and the actual building principals or staff, et cetera, are, are included in all of the communications about those 18. Because oftentimes, they have plans in their school that may not help, may make the situation worse and could be improved. So we want to make sure that they are notified and told about those particular 18 roads and, and when they're going to be studied.
SIC, good point, those school improvement councils.
Yep. Yeah, definitely will include them. Also want to include our neighborhoods and representatives from our neighborhoods, our businesses and merchants along these commercial corridors, want to include them.
Thank you.
So I think urban design has a good, good approach to, to doing this and of course, we'll be working, looking at it very closely with, throughout our city departments as well to make sure we're engaging everybody.
Clint, of course, you know this here, and you say late May, makes me think about Memorial Day and then the first week of June, and if you've ever seen this town around the first of June, it gets kind of scarce.
Yep.
So let's just eyeball that. For Clint or, or maybe Beth, I saw at some point in the RFP on Appendix A or something like that, but where could, where could the layperson easily find those 64 streets being studied?
I can email them to you, they're in the final scope of work. I can get those to you.
I wasn't saying I was the layperson, I was saying, yeah, hypothetically.
Um, we'll be, we'll be putting a website, a webpage together.
Okay, yeah, that would be great, just the names of the streets would be great for people to look up to see.
I, I don't think that we can undervalue what we're doing here. As a, as a growing city, but as an active city, we all live in our neighborhoods and see the number of people walking through our neighborhoods, walking through downtown, trying to get across some of these roads to make it somewhere. So I don't think we can undervalue what we're doing here. This is a really big deal. And I think this is a, a roadmap for us to just be a dynamic, active city for our pedestrians to be able to, you know, for, for moms and dads to walk their strollers, to runners, to people like me who pretend to run, you know, I mean, just, just really, really tremendous. So thanks.
You're coming along, Tom. You're coming along.
Well, just say walkers, you know.
Walkers.
Yeah, you know, people walking.
I'm barely a jogger.
Okay.
You're a good jogger.
It's a great opportunity.
Walkers, yeah.
And really, what, what we've recently have done on Augusta Street, it, it allows, it gives us that opportunity to maybe think a little bit outside the box when we think about things that maybe in the past we wouldn't, wasn't so comfortable doing or think that was an option. I think we're seeing we can, we have more options out there to address safety issues, traffic calming.
And, and I will say, I mean, the difference in knowing what was coming and then being there that day, watching cars in the diet. It is, you know, very quick response to making, to tweaking adjustments in the painting and all that was, was so critical because, you know, once it was in play, you could see that things that just weren't obvious in design.
It, it also seems as if the DOT is really willing to take a look at some of these urban areas around the state, but ours here in Greenville to, to do things that maybe they historically haven't done in the past that they're willing to do now to, to recognize that there's a human aspect. It's just not vehicles, how to, how to move vehicles safely and efficiently. Instead now, how to move vehicles safely and efficiently. And oh, by the way, there are a lot of people that live around these vehicles and how can we adapt to the human aspect of, of the neighborhood? So that's really good to see, too.
You, you made an excellent point, but actually, I really think it has a lot to do with the presentation from, from Clint and the staff to DOT more so. Oftentimes, when they, because the data that he collected, I mean, if they are traffic engineers, then the information he collected was valuable information to understand, not only for Greenville, but for the whole state, to realize the value of the lives and what we're going to have to go through in order to make it. I think it had a lot to do with that, and I do appreciate the work and their timeliness. They worked on it and kept moving on it and didn't wait four or five months later, then came back and said, oh, we don't have time, you know? I think all of that played a role in it, and I appreciate all, all of us being on the same page, you know, making sure we move forward, whatever we had to do so they can move forward. And I think this is going to continue and because our neighborhoods need to see that we do take into consideration more so the public safety and the care and concern about the community and that we're willing to invest, make changes that others would not have made if they had been on council with me a long time ago. Lord, some of them moved mountains at all, I'm like, oh, God. But anyway.
To remain nameless.
Yes, they will remain, remain nameless, yes. But thank you so much, Clint. I appreciate the hard work that y'all done taking, I mean, y'all spent numerous hours and then having to come out and make tweaks and changes. Now, that's exciting. And then having a partnership with, with the police so they don't get all side, you know, we don't get people going through some shit. We had nobody going through road rage. That's exciting to me because you hear all this stuff on TV, so that's very exciting. Now, Mrs. Manager.
Do you have a couple of other items?
Thanks, Clint.
Thanks, Clint.
Shannon wants to give a quick update on the development code process.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager and council members. I just wanted to alert the community to our three open houses that are scheduled next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at various locations throughout the city. Thank you to our communications team for assisting with finding the locations and all of the information is available on our homepage at the, at the city's website, www greenvillesc.gov. And you can find each of the meeting infos there, as well as also throughout our e-blast and our social media, as well as greenvillesc.gov devco, which is the website for the Greenville Development Code Project. So just wanted to alert the community to that that's happening next week. We encourage everyone to come out and provide their input on our findings thus far as we move through this important project. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I, I would like to finish the night by recognizing Michael Frickson for his service in the city manager's office. He's been nothing but professional.
Pleasure to work with.
Diligent, hardworking, Johnny on the spot, and definitely went above and beyond, Michael. I want to thank you for that. At times, it can be called hazardous duty, and he, he rose to the occasion, so I want to congratulate him on his new position as principal planner for long-range planning. He's working for Shannon and her team over in the planning department. He's going to be a great asset over there. Wish you great things for the future. And I want to welcome Megan Young, who'll start on Monday, and she's going to take over for Michael and I'm sure continue to raise the bar in that position. So thank, thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you, Z. Michael, do you know Shannon? Bless your heart, get you some Geritol, that's all I got. It's going to work you to death. But thank y'all so much for that information, and we really do appreciate that, and we're looking forward to wonderful things. We thank all of you who, who came tonight, the council, whether you, whether you had